Good evening, Deputy Mayor Downey.
Here.
Councilmember Rook.
Present.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember May.
Here.
Councilmember Hitt.
Sherri Kidd is gone, is present.
Councilmember Roden.
Here.
And Mayor Julia Mott.
Yes, here.
Manager Key.
Here.
Attorney Moore.
Here.
Okay, so I would use the mayor's secretary.
I'll second him.
I'll go to Mayor, please.
Aye.
And I'm going to forward to the chair. So, we will have the ladies and side invited, Councilman Dan Gase, who's a veteran of the United States Air Force.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just to know if I might, I wanted to recognize Dan for his service to the country, and also recognize the other one, Judy, on his celebration. Remembering Colin and honor those who served, and have as, given every ounce of duty they were able to give. So, and all of us, during the coming holiday, that does not forget the great fellows that served. Thank you. I don't believe there's any ceremony or more talk of it than that. Oh, yeah, we have it. So, with that, I will go to either this dream, I'm in the seat, in our agenda, and then, during set aside, now that I'm leaving for a public comment. And my apologies if I mess up any of these. Fortunately, the person who's in the seat. And that's Dr. Ralph Smith. He's, he's here? Please, come to the podium, the station, and you're addressed. You know, I'll take about three minutes for each of you.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Dr. Ralph Smith. I'm the chairman, chief executive officer of Worldwide Concepts Incorporated. I'm a practicing psychologist, and I've been practicing for approximately 23 years. The reason why I came and asked for some time to speak is that I read with much interest a local paper that had an article about public access television. And it was kind of interesting to note some of the points that were made, because in my previous life in Boise, Idaho, I was appointed by then-former, or now-former mayor Brent Coles, to serve on a board that actually established public access television with the Alliance of the Cable One Network, which operates throughout the inner mountains west. And a lot of the things that I noticed that were raised as issues was of interest to me, and I wanted to first of all, offer my help in that transition, indeed, to council, and the alliances are formed. But most importantly, I wanted to kind of express the thoughts that it's quite complicated to put one of these together. Even though revenue is provided by the initial flow with the local cable outlet, which of course in this case is Wade Broadband, it requires an alliance of not only a college or a university with production skills, but also groups of interested citizens within the community. An alliance with, indeed, Wade Broadband, of course, the council. And in our case, we also got the county involved, in both Ada and Tanyan County, which has an EDA, ADI of 530,000 people, so that's quite significant size. But anyway, what I wanted to bring up to the council for their consideration is to get some input from citizens, much like myself. I live here in Port Angeles, 122A East Fourth Street, and perhaps take advantage of some of those skills and experiences to make that transition very easy. I also wanted to point out to the council that the revenue flow from this can be considerable. It's not just your subscriber fees that you get in your franchise agreement, but also the fact that you get the schools involved, you've got football games or basketball games you can broadcast. You need to broadcast your council meetings and the county government meetings. That was one of the big things that Boise did, and they granted 30,000 a year to us as board members to cover that expense. But perhaps most important, it calls us, everyone in opportunity, regardless of your position in the community, to let your voice be heard, and that's the beauty of public access television. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that there's plenty of revenue opportunities there, and that if everyone can work together as one group, and I would be more than happy to jump in and help. And I've been in broadcasting for over 30 years, I'm nationally accredited as a member of media, that there are really some great opportunities there. Perhaps the best thing is the citizens here in Port Angeles, and maybe beyond that a little bit, can actually have their voices heard and have it be a venture that would not be financially draining venture. And to just give you very briefly how successful this can be, with the help of county government, which we've incorporated both Ada and Tanyan County in Boise, Idaho area, greater Boise area, plus the school districts, plus the Boise State University. I'm sure you've heard of a few successes we've had with that university. I'm a UCLA graduate myself, but the bottom line is, we were able to get a facility, production area, that was set aside, equipment. We were able to take Boise State students that had a future in broadcasting, they volunteered their time. We gave them university credits while they did that. We had people pay a fee to be trained as producers, to be able to produce their own programming. And indeed, once that got beyond that point, we actually had people put programs on the air that were sponsored. And you have to follow the public television example, where they just basically say, "This is brought to you by ABC Lumber, serving your lumber needs for 30 years." There's no advertising items or services beyond that. And when it was all said and done, we were generating revenue of between three quarters to a million dollars a year. So, I just wanted to propose that as an opportunity for you folks, and if you decided that you'd like to proceed in that direction, I stand ready to serve, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Downey, ladies and gentlemen, the council staff. As you know, I'm very interested in seeing this public access channel take off, because I think it could be a valuable tool for the young people in this community to be able to get all of the skills they need to go into a broadcast facility down in Seattle and go to work in, at the end of their high school career, as opposed to going through four years of university, as I had to do, to get a degree in broadcast journalism. The Peninsula College here and the Skill Center has all the equipment necessary to get the skills that they need. And all we need is for the opportunity to put the program in that they can develop and produce to get it on the air. Now, I noticed that we were given a handout here having to do with Channel 3, and yes, I did mistakenly represent Channel 3 as the public access channel, when actually it's Channel 21. And in fact, there's a total of three channels available if we can get sufficient programming. And as you know, Stephanie has been to many, many, many meetings this year, and probably has sufficient programming to provide for one of those channels already. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for your interest in being able to help and put this together, because we're all flying blind here. We all have an idea of what this program, what this channel can do. One of the main things it can do, they have a head end right here in this chamber, and they could carry every one of these council meetings live. And some people that can get out, the people that are shut in, they could watch these city council meetings, the county commission meetings, and possibly that's some of the reason, maybe that's some of the reason you have not, you haven't yet. But wanted you to know that there is $60,000 available sitting down at the table for you to use just as soon as somebody out there asks for it. It was there from the inception of this contract 12 years ago. I don't think it's drawing interest, or it does no good to sit there. So, when you get this preview tonight, an update on Channel 3, there's going to be a slide on there that says you'll have to spend $60,000. And maybe that was intended to scare you away from this project, but the rest is sure. That $60,000 is already there, it's yours for the asking. Now, there is going to be some outlet for some of the production, for some of the broadcast equipment, because we're now in high definition, which we were not when that contract was signed. But as Dr. Smith told you, there is some revenue to be generated from this. It can be self-sustaining. You can charge five cents per month per subscriber, and I think you can go, the federal law will allow you to go all the way to 25 cents per month per subscriber, to make this a self-revenue generating process. So, don't be afraid, don't get scared of people trying to throw numbers at you. This can be done. Now, the city may have to provide some money to upfront, but it will come back to you and will help our students and our young people and the shut-in to realize what their government is doing. And this place, and they deserve it. They've paid for this building, they've paid for these seats, they've paid for everything that we've got going here in the city. They deserve better access to it, even if they can't get out to enjoy themselves. Thank you.
Stephanie, turn.
Senator, if I said this deep street. I'm here to speak about fluoridation of the water. I know you've heard a lot about it, but I'm going to go give it down the bell. Ninety percent of all countries have either removed or banned fluoridation from their water, or they never had it to start with. South Africa put it in their water in 2002, and then removed it. Almost all of the continent of Africa is fluoride-free, as is South America. And I know has third world countries that don't have water or have contaminated water are not in this study because for obvious reasons. The Czech Republic considered it, but Dr. B. Hadlik, this is from October 13th, 1999, said, quote, "It was completely unethical, it's forced medication," unquote. They rejected fluoridation. Only eight countries fluoridate water presently. The United States accounts for 50% of the fluoridation of the eight countries. That is from an article written by Jordan Resnick, August 22nd, 2014. And the article is titled, "How Fluoride Affects the Consciousness and Will to Act." Very interesting, considering the direction our country has been heading, and the voting, or lack of voting, or uneducated voting, and that's not a criticism, it's an observation, and how that has turned against us. A parliament member in Australia approached parliament with the history of Russia and Germany putting fluoride in the water in the prisoner war camps to dumb them down and make them docile. And that was from Mr. Harley Rivers Dickinson, who was a very liberal parliament member at the time, August 1987. That alone, I think, is very telling, something to think about. Australia rejected the fluoridation. Thank you.
Stephanie, move on.
Good evening, council. I'm Stephanie Nolan, 2345 East Third Avenue in Port Angeles. As you know, my camera's running. Since January, I have been actively involved in filming some of the meetings here in the city as a concerned citizen, interested in transparency. That's my whole motivation. I have filmed the charter review commission meetings, and recently filmed the presentation by the National Guard on the earthquake preparedness for the Olympic Peninsula by Lieutenant Clayton Braun. And these are typically posted up on the internet through YouTube, and then the links are sent to various sites. We'll go through that in a minute. My unedited, because I'm not a professional, my unedited videos are there to be shared with several websites. MartinLearner.org puts them up, the newspapers put them up, and other organizations. The ability to get meeting information without going to the meetings is extremely helpful to many. Not only helpful to the public, but to the participants as a memory check as to what was said or presented. Many of the charter review commissioners have mentioned, had to go back to the tape to remember what was said. And so, it's been very helpful to them also. Feedback has been good, so they feel that they can catch up or keep up with what's going on. I became extremely interested in this PEG or PEG channel when I attended the February 24th Wade Cable Focus Group Workshop in Port Angeles. I was extremely impressed with the possibilities for Port Angeles with the development of a PEG channel. I have been an advocate for the free and community-minded, for a free and community-minded use of our public access channel. I hope we can develop the access channel by working with our Skill Center. Not, and Dale just mentioned some of this, not only would it be helpful with production, but it would train students in skills associated with TV production, journalism, research, et cetera. I want a public access channel available to learn about public safety issues. I mentioned the Cascadia Subduction Zone, road safety, fiber safety, emergency information. There are so many topics that would be appropriate to this channel. I'm personally impressed with the Thurston County's PEG channel. If we could provide some of the programming to start it, oh boy, we have a fantastic channel. The project would just improve over time. Community groups should have access to this channel for promoting community events in the state council, and likewise, the commission meetings, the EDC, the ports, that all have. And I put a sample of some of the places where we would get some of these ideas, and I didn't have to generate. Thank you.
Emily Scalen.
Good evening, I'm Emily Scalen, speaking for the PEG Division for Future. I had given the presentation that you have in front of you right now to your city clerk as of yesterday, and so I think you will have it on your emails for you to refer to whenever you wish. As of yesterday, we completed nine full years of fluoridation. The city must be to ordinate for 10 years or pay the foundation $433,000. If you will look at Exhibit 1, which is in front of you, you will see that fluoridation advocates were pushing Port Angeles to be counseled, to use its powers to override the wishes of its citizens and adopt more fluoridation. When they did that, they made a major point that visits for dental pain and suffering overloaded the hospital emergency room. They promised that fluoridation would correct this. At this time, 2003, the ER treated 22,940 patients annually, of which 722 were dental patients. So, what happened? Exhibit 2, you will see a graph of dental in total, emergency room visits, year by year. The economy tank, community clinics closed. More people use the ER. Fluoridation started May 18, 2006. On 2010, a total of 27,219 patients were being treated, but dental group visits increased even more, to 1,197 visits in 2010. Next, we looked at proportion of dental visits to total visits to the emergency room. After onset of fluoridation, this increased from about 3.4% to 4.3%. For a wider look, we obtained statistics for Forks Hospital, where fluoridation has been going on for over 50 years, and for Port Townsend Hospital, which is in an area without fluoridation. Exhibit 3 gives you statistics for the Forks Hospital Emergency Room. There is little change in use numbers over a 10-year span. The dental to total visit ratio for ER visits averaged 3.4%. At the Portant Townsend Hospital, an unfluoridated area, the ratio is half that in now-fluoridated Port Angeles. The bottom line is, it's evident that emergency room visits for dental disease increased after onset of fluoridation. Fluoridation advocates were dead wrong. We have new information on harm to the brain, on lack of benefit to teeth, on excessive fluoride available to everybody from other sources. We know better now. Stopping fluoridation without fiscal penalty becomes possible, and otherwise binding contract could be canceled effective as of May 18, 2016. Just one day short of a year from now. Please think about it. Thank you.
Bye, Doc.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Doc Rice, and I am the past president of Norwest Rotary. Many of you were involved with the skate park, when we put it together about nine and a half years ago. And this Saturday, we're going to be dedicating the park and installing a sign, thanking all the people who were involved, as much as we can, all the community organizations, all the companies, and all the individuals. And it will be from 11 o'clock to 1:00. As we have put out the information that we'd like to do this, more and more people have become involved. We will have a skateboard demonstration from Urban Manufacturing and Liftech. They're going to be giving away a snowboard from the deck. The peninsula bottling is going to be providing refreshments. And we are inviting the city, the city personnel, and the city that would like to come. And we think it would be a wonderful time. The skate park has proven to be quite a gem for the community, and it's something that is in virtually pristine condition, which shows the regular pride that we have in it. And Norwest Rotary was proud to put the project together, and we're proud still to dedicate it to the community. So, we hope to see you there on Saturday. Thank you.
So, you out there, you remember the council, we're going to have a straight heart. Are you expecting us to drink, give a straight heart, don't you say?
Uh, if you'd like. I myself am going to be standing back drinking the water, because I know my technical limits. But hope to see you there. Thank you much.
I think that falls under responsibility of Deputy Mayor. Mike, Senator Taylor, you wanted to speak, Mike Thornton.
Good evening, thanks. My name is Mike Thornton, my wife and I live at 6177 PE. So, I'm here to ask for a support letter on behalf of a group that's been working on flight vehicle tourism and trying to get a loop started around the peninsula. There should be two items on the diocese for you. One is a copy of last fall, our equal in the Seattle Times, and comments on the first loop in Washington State in the North Cascades. There's about 400 miles in their loop, and they now have over 60 permanent charging stations, the fast charge and then the next level. So, a group principally in Jefferson County has been working on this, and asked me if I could help out a little bit in the cloud county. So, I thought that was a great summary, and if you, the article, and how it helps tourism. And you look at the second, the back page, is it two page handout, I hope. Down in the third to the last paragraph, there's a plug-in, north central Washington cited in a website. If you go to that, and run a background and see how it's helping their tourism, and how many sites are building out, how they're marketing, how they're advertising. They have a navigation bar that shows why your business would want to install a charging station. I think it's about four-page long, a good answer to why businesses would want to do that. I encourage you to go there and to look at it. And then the second handout was a four-page description of the project for the Olympic Peninsula, and it explains on the second page with a graphic, the first phase. And basically, it's a couple of sites near Woods Canal, and then coming up Discovery Bay. The Jamestown, one of the vendors we've talked to, they're excited to install something. Head, Airmark wants to start to install several, because they have Lake Crescent, Claylock, One Alt Lodge. So, the grant we're applying for is only for the first phase, and that's covered on the left side of the graphic, if you're curious. There are some figures that are hard to pin down that are in the handout, but I would know more about those after Thursday. We're having a meeting with a couple of charging station representatives. And then the Wilder dealership has hooked us up with a subsidiary from Nissan that handles charging stations for them. And we're going to be talking to them about how they may donate some, what kind of price breaks you get for installation, the maintenance purchase, all that sort of thing. Some of you probably know, we have, they now have six charging stations installed and operating. There are various others, and I know Tesla has one down on our waterfront. So, it's a thing that's coming, and the next generation of tourists will have an app on their phone that will tell them what their range of their car is, how it's decreasing, and where is the next charging station. They'll make decisions, do I go 30 miles, 60 miles, how far? So, help our peninsula, B and Bs, big tourism out there, small. It's time, we look towards something like this. And I'm hoping that, if my city government, I have the commissioners consider it next week, but also install more chargers locally on your own facilities. So, if you're building projects like the city doing the Stormwater Parking Lot Project over the county, they'll lay conduits underneath, and hopefully foresee soon installation of charging stations over there. So, that could be on a tourism map on the apps for tourists coming into our area. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions or give you a call at home. A number of PUDs, Port Townsend, Jefferson County was approached today, the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission, others are very supportive of this. So, I'm hoping you could consider a support letter. I appreciate it. I know Phil Lustig went to a workshop back then last fall in Edmonds, and he's been following this. Nathan's been following this, so you have staff working on it, so I'm very grateful for that. I would support the public access channel. And then sometime, hopefully, the city would get a little more active on the Climate Action Plan for the city, because it does have an impact on almost 100 grants that the state gives to show progress on a climate action plan. So, now is the retire rate, the time on my hands, I'd call and try to apply to be on your climate action plan.
Mike, the matter of the EV charging station, will be taken out later in our council meeting. Your council will decide. Lastly, Judy, handout.
Good evening, my name is Judy Ingraham. I live at 1815 East Fourth Street, and I'm here to speak on fluoridation and the medical practice. Number one, fluoride is the only chemical added to water for the purpose of medical treatment. Number two, fluoridation is unethical. Informed consent is standard practice for all medication, and one of the key reasons why most of Western Europe has ruled against fluoridation. Number three, the dose cannot be controlled. Number four, the fluoride goes to everyone regarding of age, health, and vulnerability. Number five, people now receive fluoride from any other sources besides water. Number six, fluoride is not an essential nutrient. No disease, not even tooth decay, is caused by a fluoridation deficiency. Number seven, the level of mother's milk is very low. Considering reason number six, since it is perhaps not surprising that the level of fluoride in mother's milk is remarkably low. This means that a bottle-fed baby consuming fluoridation in the water can get up to 300 times more fluoride than a breastmilk-fed baby. Number eight, fluoride accumulates in the body. The fluoride concentration in bone steadily increases over a lifetime. Number nine, no health agency in fluoridated countries is monitoring fluoride exposure or side effects. And number 10, there has been a single randomized controlled trial to demonstrate fluoridation's effectiveness or safety. There is no margin of safety for health effects. The real question is whether there is an adequate margin of safety between the doses shown to cause harm in published studies and the total dose people receive consuming uncontrolled amounts of fluoridated water and non-water sources of fluoride. If the city and the Collin County Health Department continually make statements regarding that low-income people cannot afford to take their kids to the dentist, that is not the case now, for in 2014, it became mandatory for all to sign onto the Affordable Healthcare Act, which covers dental care. Is the city going to continue on insisting that fluor be added to drinking water without the consent of all party? Unlike all water treatment process, fluoridation does not treat the water itself, but the person consuming it. The Food and Drug Administration accepts that fluoride is a drug, not a nutrient, when used to prevent diseases. By definition, therefore, fluoridated water is a form of mass medication. This is why most Western European nations have rejected the practice, because, in their view, the public water is not an appropriate place to be adding drugs. Thank you.
These are now just a bit after security, so. All closely, the public comment, if you're in the general, go to, try to cheat, charge, be one. Public here instead of not yet, in the session, or by order of setting. My order said.
Thank you, Mayor Council. It'll be for the public hearing. I thought I would do a little bit of the background on this, which may help. What I'm going to do is kind of go way back because it really plays an important part about why we're here today. And I'm going to go back to mid-year 2012, the time that I remember. And one of the reasons I remember it so well is because I was in the office for only approximately a couple months and we had a new finance director. And I was told that unless we started making some changes mid-year 2012, we were expected to be out of budget by the end of the year by approximately $800,000. And that was not something that I anticipated after I entered the office. And so we did make some adjustments. In fact, we went through the budget and part of that budget process, because the amount that was involved, involved a reduction in staff. And all the departments came together. It was a painful process, but we got through it. And between 2012, 2013, we reduced eight and a half positions affecting the general fund budget. And one of the things that I want to say about that is when we did go through that process, it really was a process of convenience. We had some positions that were vacant, they were the first to go. In fact, we reduced almost every single one of those positions through attrition. And going back, I believe it was all but one, but it was the majority by far were through attrition, had no basis on priorities, and it was a matter of convenience. And we did structurally balance the budget for 2013 and we fixed our problem for 2012. One of the things that we did back then is say, how did this happen? Why did it happen? How did it happen? And there are a lot of things that came together back then that made that situation as bad as it was. One of them was the economy. We had, we had a decrease in the revenue we anticipated for sales tax, which is a direct result of the economy. That was one. Another one was we had a really, a big spike in our criminal justice cost. That was one of those years that we saw this significant spike. But the third one, and there were multiple, but these are the three biggest. When the budget was put together prior to 2012 and a few years prior to that, we did use some creative, what I would have called creative measures to put together the budget or what some of us have called raps out of the hat, I believe back then, and no criticism other than I think people thought the economy might turn around. There were long-term revenues used. Some other things are not sustainable and they caught up with us in 2012. So as a result of that, we started thinking a little bit more strategically, long-term, in how we put together the budget. So we didn't have this happen again. And we started down the road of a long-range financial plan. And we started that with the council. A few of you were not involved in that process when we started, but a lot of you were. And it was a really good process. We had some goals for that process. One of the goals was to have a strategic approach in how we put together the budget. Another one was to have a strategic approach in how we dealt with future reductions if they were needed. Rather than do what we did in the past and do it on our convenience, it makes no sense to the community, it makes no sense for a business, nobody would do it, they would do it based on priorities. And a really big goal that we had is to move from a staff-driven budget to more of a council driven budget process. The first year we dealt with policies that drove a lot of our financial decisions and I'm not going to go through those now, that's not why we're here, but there were a lot of basic policies that dealt with everything from our general fund reserve amount to how we deal with, or how we deal with our long-term debt and how we approach debt. And those policies were put together and were propagated by the council and of course they're going to be reviewed every once in a while, we'll be doing that. Year two was priority setting and that's where we're at today. The process that we went through, as a reminder and go over with the community, is that each department director was required to submit no less than four or five items, budget items that were considered to be, if they had to make a cut within their department, what are the lowest priority items that they have in their department relative to their coordination? And they had to submit at least one staff item because that's where a lot of the real savings are. Each department did a great job of that. We held, the council held numerous work sessions, including a public listening session to review and discuss the low priority programs that were submitted. And then the council individually scored the low priority items, programs that were submitted. And it's important to recognize too that in one department, one department's lowest priority might be a higher priority than another department's highest priority because departments are, or the priorities are different to the community based on different functions. And that was done. The individual scores were then combined into a consolidated list and then the council reached consensus on the program priorities. What was interesting about this is that the council, based on their consolidated list, all of the programs or activities that were evaluated and that were scored fell into logical groupings that really made this job a lot better and in my mind really sort of validated the process in that there were. It's important to recognize too that the list that we're talking about is just intended to be one of many tools if we need to use it to balance the budget and we likely will. And as you can remember, 2015, not similar to 2012, but only similar in that, again, we passed a balanced, structurally balanced budget and before the ink was dry, it was out of budget because of the recent closure of one of the two paper machines at Napalm. They did what they needed to do to be a thriving business, but it had an impact on the city because of the utility tax, so it was substantial. So we, I also want to say that even though there may be reductions in programs and it will be something that I will use and staff will use as we put together, not only balance the budget for 2015, use it to help us guide balancing the budget for 2016. Anything that we do is brought back to the council for council authorization eventually, whether it's a budget amendment for 2015 or whether it's the proposed budget that we submit to the council for 2016. So I'm just going to go through really quick and the, the three groups are the highest priority programs out of the low priority programs submitted. I'm just going to name the general categories and that is maintain public safety, maintain existing infrastructure, and maintain support services for external and internal customer services. Those were considered to be the highest out of the three categories. And by definition, those to be the things that we won't use to reduce the programs or those items without something happening where we would come back and talk to the council. It takes something pretty significant to get that far into the programs or services. Then there's the mid-level priority programs and services, public safety and prevention, getification of quality of life, and. And employee wellness are the three items. And it's not likely we would need to get to those, but if we did, we would look at those as we, we were to balance the budget. Then the lowest of the programs and services that were presented, it was. Support to external agencies and internal efficiencies and low priority program reductions. And those were the lowest. And when you look in the resolution, there was one other item in the resolution we also put in there. If we do, in fact, if staff submits to the council a, a support to an external agency as one of those items for reduction, it was the council's wishes through the work sessions, through a consensus, that we tried, were practical, we tried a phased approach at making those reductions. So we do it over a couple of years rather than all at once. And that was added also in the resolution, which again provides guidance to staff. So with that, you know, we can answer any questions or you can open it up to the public hearing at this time.
So, Mr. McKeon, is there any questions? Well, I'm just going to suggest in group three, it might be more consistent with what's in the resolution if we talk about internal inefficiencies as opposed to efficiencies because I think that what we're tagging is those programs that aren't very efficient. I think it would help the public understand that category.
Well, I think just out there, and that does make sense intuitively, but because of the way the items were submitted, and going back from memory a little bit, that's scary at times, but I believe it's because it was the council's desire that, for instance, just one example, that rather than provide a free service outside of the city, you know, and some of the support services we do recharge. And, and that was one of those items. So it was, I think that might be, might be how it was worded. And again, when I say it's one of many tools to balance the budget, looking at things that are inefficient or looking at collaborative approaches or looking at, you know, public-private partnerships or public, public partnerships, all of those things will always be tools that we look at from year to year. So we didn't really make the list, it's just assumed that that's something that we need to do as staff every year.
Susie.
What I'd like to do is I want to thank staff very much for getting us to the place we are today. I mean, you guys got us to the financial policies, now we're getting to these priority settings and I really do hope that we can continue and finish off into the vision and mission that we have now. Because that's going to really help us with our comprehensive plan. So I applaud for this and thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. This is an amazing process to go through and we have taken a long time to get here as a city. It's almost surprising, or it is surprising that something like this hadn't been done decades ago. And oftentimes it is something like a very challenging economy that really makes staff and council start to look at things differently. And I'm just happy that you took advantage of that opportunity and I think we're making progress. Work in motion.
I would like to thank staff. This has been a difficult process, but it's so helpful. When I was first on council, we didn't have this type of vision. Every project that came to us and I had issues and voted against the AMI project back when it was proposed, but it was never, any project that came to us from staff at that time was never put in perspective of, of our total debt. Everything was presented just piecemeal, this project and this is how much we'll pay. And as a council member, it took so much more work. I had to do extra research and study and try to figure out how it affected us overall because we weren't given the, the total picture of our financial state. This is such an improved method and I really thank staff for bringing us this, this new way, this new, these new tools so we can better understand how we can prioritize our spending or savings to the citizens. And as a council member, it makes my job much easier and it helps me understand the total scope of our, our projects and our total spending. So this is great and it's, it's been wonderful to have this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Dunning. Mr. McKeon, 2012, you eliminated 8.5 positions is what I heard. The majority through attrition. I've been led to believe since being on staff that the majority of staff positions actually came from the Parks and Recreation Department. Can you comment?
There were Parks and Recreation employees, but there was also an employee in the fire department. I believe there was an employee in the police department. There was a half employee, which was a halftime position in the city manager's office. And I could get that. In fact, what I will do is I will be glad to email full council a list of those positions that were eliminated. It was, there were a lot of positions throughout the city.
I guess what I hope is on this, I believe, again, from my past experience, the biggest department that I took in, it was Parks and Recreation.
That may be true. In fact, I believe that is true, that I believe they lost two. Corey may know that it was more than one position, I didn't know that.
Right. Thank you. I wanted to say it again to my fellow council members, I don't support this. As everyone knows, I did not submit my scorecard. We even had one scorecard turned in that wasn't signed by a council member during this process. I still believe that we owe the residents a more sharper and potential approach to personnel costs and I, I don't believe we've explored that side of this conversation enough for me to support cutting residents' services. Thank you.
To, I, this series, we, talking before we open the second, I made the resolution this moment and opened it up to the public hearing, but I just want to share a couple thoughts before we do that. I'm just very appreciative of the honest, organized, pragmatic, and business-like approach that we've all taken in this manner. It's refreshing. I think, and I guess in, to that, in that context, I want to express my personal appreciation to all of you that sit over there in your cooperation and your collaboration in this process. It's just been impressive to me and I'm just quite, well, I'm quite pleased that we've gotten through this process to date civilly and I think appropriately. Not without difficulty, not without challenges, not without angst, but that we're working together in itself is, in words of my grandson, one of them, that's way cool. I think if we continue to do this to, to you and the audience, I think that you're seeing this table and that table, you need to know that we really are working together. But we've done it, I think, in a higher measure of leadership. I think we've tried to take on a huge challenge and so far, I think we're doing it well with it frankly. And well, thanks, thanks, excuse me, thanks of ours part to, to those gentlemen that you see and ladies do your, your, but. With that said, let me read the resolution and open this matter to the public hearing and invite your colleagues. This is your time to share your thoughts. It's important that you take this opportunity and to be a little bit of a grandstanding to say. Resolution of the city, council of the city of Los Angeles, Washington, adopting program and services policies for fiscal years 2015 and 26. With that, open the public hearing and again, come to the public information, name your address and don't be bashful. This is exactly why we're here today, to hear from you.
Thank you, I'll take the mic. City council and staff and taxpayers, I look up here and I see a million dollar staff and I'm just literally figuring it by the wages that I think are paid up there and it makes me wonder, why are we spending $600,000 a year for legal fees? Why are we spending? Why are we spending that much money? Are we in that much trouble? Is that the cost of doing business? $600,000 is a lot of money. Now, if it is necessary to spend $600,000 a year in legal fees, then let's hire four lawyers, four young lawyers that can get up to speed and become absolute experts on whatever our problems are, and at least they'll spend that $600,000 right here at home in our neighborhood, and we won't be sending an order to the Caskedew Law Firm. That's one idea. And also, I keep hearing various members of the city council say that this CSO project, this $52 million, $48 million, I'm not sure what the total tag was, but they say that this was forced upon us by the state. Well, no, it wasn't forced upon us, it was decided upon by whomever was sitting at the city council when the decision was made. This is a $52 million problem that could have been solved probably with about 10% of that, five to six million dollars, if they had used some of the existing infrastructure already in place. This was an ego project, the most expensive in the history, and I certainly hope the next city council will take a lot longer view and do a lot more homework before they nest to another program like that, which was unneeded and unnecessary. We were dumping a few million dollars in the straight every year, while 18 miles across there, the city of Victoria dumps all of their sewage for a half million people into the street daily. And so that little bit of, that little piddle that we were putting in there is hardly sufficient for us to be as concerned as it seems like the people in ecology were. And also, it might be time for the city council to push back some of these, what you call unfunded mandates. You know, they threaten you with a $1,000 a day fine, or $5,000 a day fine. We'll tell them certainly, start fining us, and as soon as it gets to a certain point, we'll turn in our charter. The city won't dissolve, and now they'll be a part of the county, and now it's a county problem. You know what? They wouldn't let you do that. They would find a way for you to make this a little bit more manageable, instead of throwing around these threats of fines. So grow a little bit more, and let's not let the state push us around as much. Also, from what I understand, there's $600,000 per year, or at least last year, that went to this white ambulance in town. There could be a way that the city could capture that $600,000 instead of letting it be billed to the Olympic ambulance company, because nine times out of 10, the red ambulance is the first one on the scene, and they could make the transport, but instead, they called in the white ambulance, they, this is a part I don't understand too, they will dispatch the Olympic ambulance, and Olympic ambulance, as far as I know, has never paid one dime into the Pincom fund, which pays for all the other agencies, the sheriff and the county, even the corrections people pay into the Pincom. Olympic ambulance doesn't pay into it, and they get $600,000 a year benefit from it. So there are a lot more creative ways to get down to a mercurial budget, and say the taxpayers right now, as you know, there's probably 25 to 30% of the people in town, you cannot even pay their utility bill. People are hurting out here, folks, and this, this, I don't see the budget off of the empty spaces on the payroll is not very creative. That's, that's easy, that's a low-hanging fruit. You're going to have to dig deeper to make it to where people can afford to live and enjoy this beautiful area that we have here on the peninsula. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to share their thoughts? Yes.
Cindy Tony, 530 West St. Street. I may be wrong about the funding on this, but I don't want to, in case, what you guys are talking about, I didn't understand a lot of it. If what I'm going to mention is part of the funding and cuts, this is extremely important, or I have a feeling it's not. The homeless shelter in town shut, the hygiene center shut, that, some of the hours down at Serenity House Way out of town shut, the homeless people have to walk, I don't know how many miles it is out there to 18th Street. I know a lot of homeless people, and they've been in my house, and I can tell you, you don't want them to come in and take their shoes off, you want them to keep their shoes on, because they've been wearing them sometimes for three weeks, three months. I know there's agency that helped, but those, that's a lot of cutting, and you're expecting all these homeless, not you, whoever, them to go out there with their rotten feet and rotten socks, and the hygiene center, they, somebody defunded the taffy dancer for youth place, and I think Susan Hillman gets it together and does it herself with help. But I am really concerned with the homelessness around here, and that, that could be tied into the tourism, what we can do. You know, summers come, and I see people, they're burnt red, almost blistered, where do, where do they go? So, I may be way off base here in that those are not funded by what you're talking about, but it is a concern, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd rather see you to take this opportunity, especially with us. Please, I just wanted to give you any of your answers.
I'm Michael Luski, at 1329 Campbell Avenue, and I'm kind of disturbed about my utility bill myself, and I'm extremely frugal. I use, last month, for instance, I brought my bill. I use 59 cubic feet of water, extremely low, extremely frugal. It's a $1.40 worth of wire, and for that privilege, I'm paying $95 for that privilege. Got 2926 is my water base, which I guess everyone pays, $48.33 for my sewage, for the privilege of that. CSOs, which I understand is basically $18 for everyone, $95.59 for, you know, $1.40 worth of wire, just kind of seems out of line, so, you know, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd rather see who would like to share their thoughts.
In your case, you're right.
Anybody? Anybody who would like to share their opinions on this matter, we'd love to hear them.
Hearing not, uh, the closest public hearing.
Oh, I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I said that, I know it's wrong. This is going to continue, but I'd like to say, with your close comment, because that's why I told the chair to jump up there, you have a close opportunity to speak this evening. This matter will be continued to public hearing on our June second council agenda.
There's the first, the, any thoughts you'd like to share out in some of your.
We're on late items right now?
Yeah, I'm, I think that's all we are.
Yes, we do. We have a couple of late items. One is a construction contract award for the emergency HVAC replacement in Pincom, we brought to the council earlier, that could be under finance, and you should have a copy under dyes. The other item is a late item under information for number four, under information, and that's a residential water retail rate modification, actually a correction, and the public chair can forward that, and you should have received it by email, or all of a sudden, you should have under dyes. Those are the two items.
Let's go back to item E, consent agenda. Any of you that have a score, anything on that recent agenda?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to actually back to D on the agenda and ask council of staff, the D item on the agenda, if you would, please. I would like to actually add, if you would, allow this is to place electric vehicle charging station letter of support in our, our agenda this evening.
I was going to get to that in the beginning, just in general. Anytime.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that under reports by council members.
Do I have a question about that? Is there a timeline for that letter of support, or is it something that could be made?
I'm going to, we have to make that, is there a time?
That is something that has been requested by the end of the week.
So there is a time concern?
Right.
In which case, I would.
Okay, so, let's see, I'm going to put the H, HAC and EV charging, the S, the items, anything else? Okay, so, the straight consent agenda, items one and two.
Well, Mayor, I believe that council member Collins wanted to make a few comments on one of the items in consent, E3, if you.
Oh, okay.
Now's your chance if you want to.
Right. Well, the only concern I had is when we started this process, we indicated we weren't going to use any tax dollars for supporting this project. It's either E3. I do support the project, and I understand that we've used REIT funds to help with our share of that, and have, we've been concerned that the REIT funds are not sustainable when applied over projects that go on for several years, but in my understanding, I wanted to ask staff, this is a one-time use of the REIT funds, and so therefore, the sustainability question of REIT funds is really not an issue. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, and also, I'll have the, our CFO, I'll tell you where our REIT funds are at, and that's actually one of the few good news stories of the front of this.
The REIT funds, there are two different pots of real estate excise tax, and the real estate excise tax, non-real estate excise tax, too. They are similar in their statutory authority, with some minor exceptions, REIT 2 can't be used for purchasing of park and recreation land, REIT 1 can. Both REITs can be used for maintenance to a limited extent, but we're, before, we had one dangerously low in the amount of REIT funding, because real estate sales weren't happening, and the city had made long-term commitments for REIT funding for debt service. What we've seen over the last year or so is, real estate sales have picked up considerably, so therefore, the tax that's imposed is collected at the time of real estate closing, so we're starting to get much more revenue. Now, between the two REITs, we have possibly $350,000 worth of revenues. This would take a little over $100,000, but by the end of the year, I expect that pot of money to be somewhere approaching the $500,000 mark, where two years ago, it was getting down to less than $100,000, so we're doing quite well in that regard.
Okay, well, my concern was that we had promised not to use tax dollars, but in this case, we're not increasing the taxes for anybody, we're just, what we had tried to do, which is use existing funds, either in our reserves or somewhere else, to help with this project, and I think this is consistent with that.
And to clarify, the $106,000 that's requested to be reserved is for a grant match for money from the state of Washington, and if we do not receive the grant, then the $100,000, the $106,000 commitment that is returned back to those funds are available for council use of future.
But I just wanted to indicate, I do support this, trying to maintain the light specific field, and using existing funds to do that, which is what we've been doing all along.
And I want clarification, I forgot to ask, you're just questioning to our committee. The other is, is it requisite that I read this resolution as a part of reading this agenda or not? I mean, technically, read publicly a resolution is, if you appropriate.
No, as long as the resolution is included in the consent agenda, you need to read the whole consent agenda, but as long as the resolution is included in there, you don't have to separately.
I'd like to read separately.
No, separately, no.
I also, I guess before you do that, I just would like to, I guess, disclose, and I'm not sure this actually has, we're here on it, that the tribe will be going through this exact same grant as well, and I will be working on that grant, but I totally support both fronts, so. I'll let you make your decision.
And if I might, I want to, oh, Sissy and I, and Lee, I've been on a committee working to the Senate for some time, and I think it's entirely appropriate as we, in context of this, I want to personally thank the, the seatmate to my right, who's really led this effort today. We, we do in fact, with fortune, to be funding, see funding available to the right civic building that it used to be, I want, all of us to thank the gentleman who's led this fight, and appreciate your, thank you very much. So, let me read the consent agenda. City council minutes April 21st, 2015, and May 5, 2015. Expenditure approval list for 25, 2015 to 5, 8, 2015, a amount of $3,866,740 and 49 cents, and a resolution for the UTAC letty facility, parentheses, YAF, and parentheses, grant, for the purpose of paying, keeping, buying, and, of civic, civic field.
Motion to approve this, right?
One second.
Would you favor the motion, say, could you say aye?
Aye.
So, we have two, two late items, but one I know we are going to, by this, may even this, some of them are EV charging. I don't know if you want me to put this on my agenda, sir. I know there's agenda, we come down.
You're a boss.
That's why I have to. Well, that's, that's.
I should go under finance.
Yeah, this is another game, K2, to single or not.
That's the problem, they took other considerations.
So, we go now to either H, or, you know, this examiner, can you, you just make your decision.
This is a second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance is largely the same as was then at the first reading, but at the first reading, if you recall, Nathan outlined several additions and changes that we had intended to make in the ordinance. Those were some items requiring tuning, really, to cover some contingencies that we wanted to include, just to assure that we had addressed to the extent possible, all the reasonable, reasonably anticipated contingencies that might arise using the hearing examiner system. So those are the changes that have been made, they're identified in the council level for design. Otherwise, the ordinance is pretty much the same as it was. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and I'm sure Nathan can expand as well.
Okay, let me, you have any questions, this has to go in.
Well, I, I raised some points of last time, and I believe they've, I, I appreciate that, so, I fully support this.
You guys? So, we read the ordinance, the ordinance of the city, Port Angeles, Washington, the Sabbath, she checked it, 2.18 of Port Angeles, and this is a quote, hearing consent. I approve the ordinance. I think that was right, and share. Yeah, she beat you by a, she doesn't watch. It's remarkable, she was a sharp, she is, she just came back.
And there's a 16-hour difference in the middle of the night, and so.
Your chart is a dead or something?
I'm a hater.
Okay, if motion on the floor, all those that are there, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You both, motion to pass this agenda. Okay, on finance, the construction contract award, emergency HAC replacement in Pincom component.
Counsel, I'll take this one. So, on April 21st, council approved emergency resolution to, for with a, emergency resolution to, for with a negotiated contract to repair an HVAC script, HVAC unit. emergency resolution to move forward with a negotiated contract to repair, uh, H V A script, H V A C, uh, unit, uh, that supports a 911, uh, operations, uh, system. Um, council approved that emergency resolution. Uh, we then began negotiations with, uh, Schmidt's sheet metal, local contractor, uh, also their subcontractor, Portlanders Electric, um, to come to negotiate advice for the repair of this H V A C system. Uh, we just recently concluded, um, the negotiations. So we brought this as a leg item to get approved by council. Uh, we, uh, negotiated amounts of $47,466. We brought that down from initial bid of 53, almost $54,000. So before today is to ask you to approve this contract so we can move forward with the H V A C repairs to the, uh, um, the system, H V A system and, and supporting PennCom. PennCom does have funds available, um, including 5% for contingencies. Um, if there are any change order in this contract. With that, I can take questions on the, on the construction or, uh, please chief on the operational requirement for this.
Yes, Mr. Collins?
City.
I just wanted to, um, give thanks to contractors. Yes?
Yes, uh, I originally had questions about this. Uh, number one, the size of the room, basically a score footage. Uh, my background is with, with HVAC also, besides, uh, piping and mechanical work. So, uh, the $47,000, $47,500, I, I see is riding in there. I don't see that this is an outstanding, uh, question or moment. So I will be fully supportive about this. Thank you.
I just, I was just a little curious as to, I guess the difference, you know, when you negotiated down, what was some of the variation?
Uh, it was not involved in negotiation, but usually it's, uh, you, you, you discuss, uh, amount of materials required, amount of labor, time required, uh, the number of people required, um, as a, as a, you know, take of what we feel is, is reasonable for this amount of work.
I, I'd like to help out Greg. There are also, uh, probably controls. There, if you have a lot of control points that adds wider fit, a substantial amount, uh, rather than having a few key control parts of, of your system, setting your temperature. So if you go around putting a bunch of thermostat in, each one of those thermostat, for example, would cost an additional fee. That would just be one way of sharpening costs here.
Mister Deputy Mayor, I would show that we approve an authorized city manager to award a construction contract with Schmidt's sheet metal, separated, what do you want to see H V A C replacement in the bedcom boom room project P C 1501? In the total contracting amount of $47,466.19, including applicable taxes and the major modifications to the contract if necessary.
Okay. Motion to say, to pay executive, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Most agree. I want to ask you that. Thank you. So I think we are, now we can, K, now K two, and headed to the discussion and, and request for a letter of support for, also, uh, installing a E B charging station, uh, in, uh, Port Angeles. So this, uh, I have spoken to this matter and yesterday during transit, uh, more media, uh, you happy to share some thoughts into the same situation?
Mister Deputy Mayor, I would like to thank my authority for bringing this to council attention. I think this is very important. As a city to stay vibrant and grow, we need to move forward and stay, um, ahead of the trends that bring people here. And, um, Tesla is selling more and more cars. It's, it's trending and, uh, we want people to understand that if they drive their electric car in Portland, that they won't be stuck here, that they can actually participate in touring the peninsula. That they can truly come and go in, in Portland with, um, these stations. And us partnering with Cascade Loop is a marvelous way to put us on the map in a, in a very relevant way. And moving forward, we're already seeing electric car tourism. We're already on the map, uh, because of our, our charging station down at our new waterfront. So I'm excited about this. I think this is, um, something we need to step up and fully participate in. So thanks. And I, and I will be supporting this letter, uh, from the city.
Yes, but this could be my confusion in the future. I believe this item should be on the finance. Um, I think it should be under another category on our agenda. Because we're not supporting it financially, we're supporting it as a way to encourage people to come here and, and, uh, so, uh, does our city clerk have a different, uh, agenda, why that we can put this under?
Yeah, I would recommend other considerations.
Considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned yesterday, um, I took the opportunity to present this matter to the board. Uh, current transit brand is also a member of the board. We are, we wanted to come and put in a discussion yesterday. Let me just, need to say, it was noted as, and Mr. noted his home is near the public, uh, common period. This is part of the large networks, uh, it's going to involve many stations across the length and breadth of the peninsula as well as it got into a very comprehensive network. And then with the Sierra Pirates, state of, uh, Washington, there would be as many as, uh, 17 or more, uh, these, of these stations across the peninsula. Uh, I think it's very timely, very appropriate, uh, that we, that we try to be adult here and to request of the letter of support. Just, I'm kind of, uh, saying that, uh, I, I view that yesterday's discussion with the transit board. And because the charging station is contracted, it's why the gate was, uh, it's entirely appropriate that the, uh, more involved with the discussion. But I believe in the cause of our discussion, that should be.
Well, I, I think that there was a general support for it, uh, and other agencies were identified supporting it as well. And, uh, and the city, obviously with the pipeline, uh, project, it's supported in the past. Um, I think there was a comment about it, uh, that normally this probably would be done by private sector and that we should encourage private sector to get involved in this as well. But, um, the United Cities don't sell electricity, so we do, we do well there.
I have a question of Nathan, but we do have a station currently active and, I presume, used, uh, by the public station of Oak Street. Could you, it could move, your observations, how well that station has been used by those who advocate it?
Certainly, we, we have seen a good use of that charging station, um, particularly during larger events. I think, uh, many of the members of the Tesla Club who supported the donations, uh, to make that unit happen, uh, have certainly continued to use it. Uh, the plug share comments relative to that station are very positive. Um, and I think it's really appreciated the opportunity that, uh, some of the E B users have had to travel to Portland, Angeles and beyond by location of that particular charger.
I had a question about this charging station. Is it possible, I mean, as we're getting more and more electronic, uh, our devices are everywhere. We've got laptops, we've got, you know, things, even, I guess, our little screen, uh, bicycles, you know, we're carrying some of their devices. Are these stations able to charge some of those devices quickly? Because that also would be a, one of the things where you have your car, you have your pedestrian, then you have, you know, it becomes a multi-use, um, for folks. And I'm wondering whether that is something that we might want to ask to see if we can get some of these to be a little bit more multi-use so that it's not just dedicated to apartments, dedicated to all of us.
So, I'm very familiar with the left side of the table, so what, how's the right side of the meeting?
Overall, I think it's a fabulous idea. So taking part in tourism is a, a better component, uh, of the wheel, giving people out here and spend time in, in our community. Uh, as with everything, there's unintended consequences. So I might, but we'll see the opportunity to, uh, uh, thank the police department because, uh, as an example, last fall with the charging station down town, uh, Oak Street, uh, there was a, a visiting camper trailer motorhome that was parked there for quite a, like I said, a period of time with a, an extension cord ran across, um, living off of our free electricity. And it was within, oh, I imagine, within a half hour of me sending a picture to the chief governor that, uh, they departed the area. At least moved to someplace where they weren't getting our free electricity. So that's just another thing. You know, there's always going to be an angle, people trying to take advantage of this. But overall, it's wonderful.
And I suppose if they were there to our time of day, would you want to say that was pretty much?
Oh, yeah.
Me, do you have any comments?
Actually, uh, Deputy Mayor, now I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to write a letter of support for an electric vehicle charging station.
One second.
Okay, the motion going forward is support the letters, letter of support for this matter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, if any?
Thank you.
So I think we, I think, I think we're, uh, ahead of our, council, please, I started with the, uh, response.
Um, I met with the, uh, Australian one who, uh, had a system recovery network, uh, two occasions since our last meeting. And they're moving forward with, uh, adopting a process for funding allocations, uh, it's collaboration between E P A and, and the U S L partnership. So I think there are projects in the future. The priority areas are stormwater, uh, habitat and shelter beds. The city of Portland, Los Angeles, falls significantly in category of stormwater. Um, so that's what I report.
Um, I just have a couple that are, uh, I know the Soliway surprise security is going to be next, uh, this coming Thursday, and I will not be able to attend. So I'm counting on the lead to represent us, no? I think it's at 3 o'clock.
So, this here, uh, to your, your vicious.
Ohio Designist, um, Tomar Azal Designist, um, I just returned from representing the state of Portland Angeles on the 20th anniversary of the, our exchange program with our sister city in Wutsu, Japan. And it was a fabulous experience. I, um, our mayor, Dan DeJulio, his wife, Carolyn, and I went along with two high school students and members of pure Portland Angeles, the, the exchange organization. And so they're about a delegation of five candidates, and we were invited by the mayor and city council of Wutsu to attend this special 20th anniversary celebration. So I left last Monday and our, our mayor is not back yet. I came back yesterday. But after we spent time in Wutsu, they went on for a side trip to Kyoto when I, I came home. So, um, we flew into Tokyo and spent, um, a couple of nights there. And then we took the bullet train three hours north. And that was a wonderful experience. There was just rice paddies everywhere and we passed so many cities. And it was beautiful, beautiful country. And once we took the three-hour, um, bullet train to, so till it ends, then we're met by the bus who drove us an hour to Wutsu. So I have a great appreciation when those, uh, were in October, we will be welcoming the English class from Tandoku High School. 39 of the students will be coming. And I have been, ever since I've been a council, I've been attending the welcoming meetings and the farewell receptions and thinking this was marvelous program. But now I have a great appreciation for how far they travel to come to Portland Angeles. It's just pretty amazing. And I understand why they're sleepy when they, they get here, um, that it's a 16-hour time change and it's. So, um, we were met, so the city hall there is, is, they had a shopping mall that went out of business. So they repainted it and rewired it and turned it into the city hall. And when the bus pulled up, we had, I would just guess about 200 people standing outside and waiting to greet us with applause and cheers and signs. And it was absolutely such a welcome. And then, um, the mayor presented a beautiful salmon, copper salmon to their mayor, and then I gave a gift to their, um, they, the city council has, um, they have a mayor, they have a council member who's the chair. He, he runs the council, he runs the meetings. And then there's 26 council members. So, 26 council members of the Wutsu city council. And so, um, that's interesting. But we had, um, just very briefly, and I, I know Mayor DeJulio will, will give a report when he returns. But I do want to compliment Mayor DeJulio. Everywhere we went, he had to give a short speech and he, he represented this so well. I had to give a speech sometimes, but he, he always did. And so I just wanted to say, we, we did our best to represent Portland Angeles. But our, our mayor was, um, was really on, on, on track there. So I just briefly, I have, I have a schedule for each day, but Friday, for instance, they, they had a bus. And, um, 9:00, we had a visit to Tandoku High School. And 9:30, we went to the fire department where they have, they're much more formal. They have a morning inspection where they, they all line up very straight and they're inspected before they start their work for the day. But, uh, the, uh, they, we, the fire department sent a jacket, um, to, um, over to them. And it was well received. And they, they were sending some reciprocal T-shirts to, to our fire department. I'm not sure the mayor has that. Um, and then, then, uh, we went to the city library. Now, everywhere we go, you come to the front door and inside the front door, there's shelves. And that's for your shoes. You take off, you do not enter any public or private building with shoes. You take off your shoes, but, and then they have, they have sand, um, little slippers there. Well, they're slippery and it's almost impossible to go up steps. And the mayor's slippers kept flying off. And it's, uh, we, we did our best. But, but, so we went to the, um, the city library, which the city library is beautiful. And you take off the shoes. And they, they incorporated trees and, and a water, um, like a river, a simulating river inside and outside the building. And they have a public hearing for, in the library for concerts. It was wonderful. And then we all heard about the controversy of the opportunity to have a bubble here. Well, they have one, but it's about six times the big and it's fabulous. So we went to their sports dome. Just because their weather is identical, was identical to ours. It was just like being home. It was sunny, windy, uh, little rain, little sun, little rain, little wind, and a fifteen degree. So, um, but the sports dome, okay, and you take off your shoes and, and slippers. But, um, but inside, and our people have indoor shoes and outdoor shoes, the students do. And, but in, inside this big year-round dome, they have people playing tennis, there's soccer fields. And so the public uses that, at a low cost during the day. In the evenings, they have, uh, sports competition, team, team sports. And, and it was just marvelous. And then we went to junior's high school and we were served a school lunch. Now, in Japan, um, there's no mannequins and there's no forks. And we were all given lovely chopsticks. But quite often they also serve soup, which was delicious. So I, you, you learn to use chopsticks because that's what you have. And so that, I, you know, it, it was, it was challenging, but the food was delicious. Um, and then we had, and then we went to the Tandoku High School and they had 600 students there all waiting for us. And we walked in, they stood and applauded. And the students prepared a fabulous, uh, program, a video of Portland Angeles they had put together themselves and put on a wonderful program. And then we all gave speeches. But we have an interpreter with us everywhere we go. Because once I say, Ohio Designist or Kenichi Wa, I'm, um, so you give a speech and you stop and they interpret it. And then you say a few sentences. And so you have to give your speech. And, and, um, so we went to high school and we observed our 20th anniversary. And our high school students stayed in host family homes and they attended school. school students stayed in host family homes, and they attended school with the kids, and they were so well received, and they were great representatives of Portland, Los High School, they were really great kids. And then we visited, there's a former mayor, and he, the current mayor is the son of the former mayor, who passed away a year ago, and, and there's a lovely tradition, we went, the year after mayor dies, everybody goes and pays homage at the great site. Cool. Anyway, but it was very interesting. And then we had a welcome dinner hosted by the mayor, and we had, but then some things get lost in translation, we had this lovely, fabulous buffet, and they announced very proudly that they had a special chef who was going to get some French toast for us. They thought we liked French toast at dinner, well, we thought they liked French toast at dinner, but they were doing it because we liked French toast, but anyway, it was just, they were trying to really be hospitable to us, and it was, it was lovely. But their food was wonderful, but the hospitality was amazing, but what's happened, what I saw was so meaningful to me, was over this twenty years of sister city, the relationships that's built, we have students that have gone, as the student learned Japanese, have gone over there to teach English in the high school, and, and so relationships have built, we were so warmly received, we were so well-treated, that when I've attended the, all the events, the welcome dinners and the farewells of here, I thought it was a nice program, but now in October, thirty-nine of the students are coming over here to visit us, and now, I'm, my friends are coming, the friendships that have developed and the respect for our, for our two cities is just immeasurable, and it's wonderful, so we were well-hosted, and I, I'm just thrilled for the opportunity to represent Portland, Los, now I do want to say that I did pay for my own trip, and because our, if you know, we're having a budget issue ten years ago, that was part of the budget, now it isn't, but it was important that we went and represented Portland, Los, when we were invited, and it was a marvelous trip. The reason I have a new hairdo is because, I don't remember now, Saturday or Sunday, they had to, myself and Carol DeJulio and Cindy Sophie from Pura, took it to a beauty shop where we had the Japanese hairdo and makeup, and then they took us upstairs and dressed us in Komodos, very formal Komodos, and it took a very long time to get dressed, if he dressed, I couldn't get dressed, I was dressed. And then we had a photo session, and, and then at the end, toward the end, the mayor came by, and they convinced him to do an outfit, so he had the great big head here, and he put on the outfit, and we had some wonderful pictures, so. We exchanged gifts, but most of all, we exchanged goodwill, and it was, it was a marvelous trip, and I'm so grateful for having the opportunity to go, so, thank you very much. Domo Aragato Designis.
I'd just like to take a personal point of interest this evening, and point out Cory with Parks and Recs, that this grant application actually couldn't have been done without you working on it prior, prior year before, to my knowledge, so I really want to thank you, Cory, for your hard work on this. Thank you very much for considering the field.
Just a couple items. First, I'm pretty tempted to go home and have French toast today.
Good.
I also had a chance to look at a couple Facebook pictures of your trip, and some of the photo opportunities, and there was a picture of Meredith DeJulio that was some elaborate head here, I'm anxious to find out the story behind that, should be interesting. And in addition to other typical meetings for the last couple of weeks, I did attend the Olympic Peninsula Collaborative Meeting, that was held, hosted by, hosted by the city here in this facility, but Congressman Gilmer was the facilitator of it. So really, I think a good meeting, a good opportunity for a lot of people from different walks of life and different viewpoints on issues to come together, and start a long process of really working together for the betterment of our area, our forests, and things of the nature, so I'm real happy to be a part of that.
I'm closing on this question, I just say I had two really great opportunities recently. I want to share with you, this, I have one, the Holland American Cruise Lines ship, stamping down, it's important. Saturday, I had a chance to, as co-chair, the host cruise committee, along with Russ Finnerman from the chamber meeting, I was just thrilled that so many volunteers came out here and helped host and welcoming those that get off the ship. I thought the whole fair went rather well, to the comments, this year in particular, when their guests were outstanding. Do any of you who were downtown on a Saturday, or around town, and saw something you didn't recognize, if you probably, just whatever way you might have helped to provide the spirit of hospitality, everyone, thank you for that. Lastly, again, I had the opportunity to facilitate a community service project campaign in the moral street steps. I hope, Cory, you, the efforts have met with your expectations, and for those of you who have not seen the old street steps recently, you may refer to, they looked actually pretty well, don't they, Cory?
Absolutely.
So I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of that, every between fifty and seventy-five volunteers that bring that effort, as a part of the revitalized Portland, Los, unified Portland, Los, in the Mount the Main project, there will be continuing opportunities in the community to participate in service projects to refurbish and upgrade and unify, not just our downtown, other portions of it. I was just very thrilled, I really was. So, if that's it, we're on to item number, that's city managers' requests.
Thank you. Counsel, we do have some items down, and one of the items is a residential water retail rate modification, actually, a correction, that was one of the late items, and I'll have our health works director just briefly over that. After that, we need to take a short pause, because we need to get our consultant online, and we're going to do a presentation on the way of cable TV access channels, and I'd like to say that this has been an interesting process, doing some of the research on this, there has been some misinformation on the subject, but it was due to, were really misunderstandings and assumptions, and I think it was educational for staff, I think the council will find it educational also, so that we have a better understanding of what that entails. So with that, I would suggest we go over the one late item, and I'll quickly go over that, and then we take a short pause, maybe a very short recess, while we're getting the consultant online, and then we'll go with the presentation. Okay, if I can address the residential water retail rate modification, we do have a clarification for the ordinance that was approved last council meeting, and the ordinance decided three dollars and eighty-seven cents as one of the rates, it should be two dollars and eighty-seven cents, so it's a script or directory correction, change it to three to a two. There's also a timing issue where the publication date of the ordinance, where the ordinance would take effect five days after publication, to make sure this, to ensure this takes effect on one June, this will be published five days in advance, to be in accordance with the ordinance that was passed.
So, the man gets in, just taking a break, he said, for a couple minutes?
Yeah, I would suggest that you take a short break, and then we'll get the consultant online, and then we'll have the presentation.
So, now, can't read your files, can't read your stuff.
Seven forty-three.